The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lyspata. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalowski Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sichio Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Waguspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viejas. Alderman Mitts. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Your honor, we have a quorum present.
I'm informed that there's a quorum present. The allegiance will be recited by Alderman Kappelman. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Eric Rivera of the Brooke Chicago. Pastor?
Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Eric Rivera. I'm the lead pastor at the Brooke Church in the 36th Ward where Alderman Gilbert-Viejas serves. I am thankful for Mary Lightfoot and Clerk Valencia for this invitation, and I'm thankful to stand here before all of you, knowing that you carry a great burden for our city, and I consider it an honor to pray for you this afternoon. Let us bow our heads together. Almighty God, opportunities like these, to stand before our leaders, is quite special to me. An opportunity to bow my heart before you to pray for them is extraordinary, God. Father, this city needs you, and I know that these leaders need you. God, the task before them is too grand for them to strategize by their own arrangements and forecastings, God. So, Father, I ask that in your kindness, you please give them wisdom to discern complex situations, patience to bear with the frustrating. God, give them compassion to endure with the suffering, and humility to look out for the interest of others, and love which holds all of it together. Jesus, you are the perfect example of all these qualities demonstrated by your sacrifice on the cross, so I pray that these public servants, when confounded, would look to you, the suffering servant and the king of kings. God, I pray that you would heal our city, you would use these leaders. God, I pray that you would move from Montclair to Rogers Park, from Austin to Little Village to Englewood to Riverdale. Father, please use this city council to govern our city in such a way that you provide jobs for the jobless, hope for the hopeless, fathers for the fatherless, and protection for the defenseless. God, I pray for them. I pray that when they're discouraged, when their work is an uphill climb, when they feel constantly critiqued and frequently judged, that they would press on with integrity, loving justice, and honesty, knowing that this work is not in vain. God, as you work in our city and use this city council, and when we see change happen, we broadcast that we will give you all of the credit. As the psalmist says in Psalm 115, "Not to us, O Lord, not to us, but to your name give glory, for the sake of your steadfast love and your faithfulness." God, I pray for wisdom as they discuss the budget today. God, I pray for clarity and for your grace to permeate this room. Keep them unified in thought and in heart, and I pray these things humbly yet boldly in the matchless and precious name of Jesus Christ, my Savior. Amen.
We will now begin the period of public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Pursuant to the Chicago City Council public comment process, time is not transferable to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for all dramatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. The first speaker is Ms. Joanna Maldonado.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Maldonado. I'm a CTU organizer, a member of the 33rd Ward Working Families, as well as the United Working Families, and we are here in support of the alder people voting no today on this budget. CTU, like during the strike, stand up to those that use tactics, that quiet those that dared to speak up, that dared to question. How many times did we hear no until we heard yes? Many who have been sitting in these positions need to feel they are supported by their communities to make hard choices, to make the right decisions. As a UWF member and a 33rd Ward and CTU, we back those candidates that are brave, that are inspiring, and that allow us to help. We should be arguing which forms of revenue are the most progressive. Instead, we are here again, voting on an austerity budget in one of the wealthiest cities in the world, and with some of the strongest alder people that proposed corporate head taxes, a payment in lieu of taxes for big nonprofits, and a real estate transfer tax that really looks at our issues of homelessness in this city. Today, I hope that all of the candidates that said that we're progressive vote no on this budget until we see a reduction in police cover-ups, that we are taxing the rich that are benefiting off of the poor in this city, that there is funding in mental health clinics, and finally addressing the homelessness in this city that was created by the same tactics that led us to here today. This is our chance to right the wrongs of Rahm's budgets. Please don't be afraid. Your communities are here in support of you. They are downstairs, making sure that you know that this is why we are all here, that we have people in positions of power that are making choices that stand together in order to right the wrongs in this city. We have lost thousands of families due to violence, gentrification, and appeasement of the rich. We need to now respond to the harms that have been done. We need to fund those mental health centers, and we need affordable housing in this city. We need to be able to stand up for all of the working-class people in the city of Chicago, and that is your job here today. There is a reason that there is a vote. This is not supposed to be a rubber-stamp council, and this is a council that I believe in and that I hope will do the right thing and continue to negotiate on this budget until we have a budget that is fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maldonado. The next speaker is Mr. Ronald Jackson, and then third, Ms. Badana Reinhold.
Good morning. I'd first like to say our hearts should be saddened by the loss of George Clement. He gave his service to this city, and even this council saluted him sometime earlier. So, I'll acknowledge that first, but then I have to acknowledge the fact that redundancy. Standing here consistently talking about public mental health services, but then we also see how it's impacting, it's impacting this city. I find it interesting how the city of Chicago can all of a sudden look at childbirth, and since there are 17 different facilities that actually participate in the program, they have picked out four to give supposedly free services. The thing there is, is that there's over 35, I mean, there's over 37,000 babies born in this city per year. I noticed that Cook County, because I was born in Cook County, is not one of the four that were included in that. The thing here is, is that we have money, we have money to give to other programs, but when it comes down to the thing that is affecting us most, guns don't kill people. People kill people with guns. A gun is an inanimate object. Public service should be just that. It should be for the public. Social services should be for the people. When we talk about homelessness, when we talk about recidivism in jails, we're filling up Cook County Jail just because we can't find places to put people that are actually suffering from real-life situations. Mental health services is part of that, and we shouldn't sit here believing that scurrying the problem is going to help. We have done too much. We have had too many conversations. We've lost too many lives. We've ignored it too long. We're not talking about reopening clinics. We're talking about restructuring the problem and putting our services where it's needed most. So, for this public body to come and actually have people stand downstairs until they decide that they want to or let you off, what happened to the public meeting act? You know, all of a sudden, this has become a prison. Follow this rule, follow that rule. If you have a security force, then your security force should be with you and not guiding the services or the public house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The next speaker is Ms. Badana Reinhold, and fourth is Deb Haas.
Yeah, my name is Badana Reinhold. I'm a member of the Community Mental Health Advisory Board for the Chicago Department of Public Health. My first statement is, the city is not financing the Department of Public Health at a level needed to ensure the public health of the city. We are missing in so many areas of protection. My attention is focused, because of my commitment to mental health, on the failure to really support mental health, public accessible services of quality. The plan submitted by the department is vacant. It doesn't have an overall vision. We need more thoughtful attention to where the needs are, how to fulfill them, and to pay attention to what really works. One of the things missing in the new employee, they've added some positions, there is no mention of certified, you know, hands-on professionals, people with a lived experience of mental health being on that list. Everybody knows that people who have experienced mental illness have a much more effective outreach, and when we have outreach workers, how do we know what they're going to do? There is nothing listed in that plan that gives substance to what is proposed, and it's underfunded. Nine million extra dollars for mental health is not going to serve all the needs of the unmet people with mental illness seeking services, and 11 million for outreach in this, for domestic violence or for violence prevention is not enough to take care of those issues either. We are not paying enough attention to what our healthful needs are and being willing to finance them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhold. The next speaker is Ms. Deb Haas, and also Mr. Rosio Garcia. Please line up.
Good morning. I'm Deb Haas, a board member of Raise Your Hand and parent of two CPS graduates. We're here today because our city's students need to know the mayor and all of you will prioritize resources for our city's students, their communities, and their education, and not consider them a bailout, as the mayor called CPS just a few weeks ago. For years, Raise Your Hand has gone before the Board of Education and relentlessly called on the mayor and all of you, not to ask for luxuries, like some of the developments we've seen approved recently for TIF funding, but to beg for the basics: clean classrooms, meeting the district's basic legal obligations to deliver special education services, safe playgrounds, reasonable staffing levels, and class-size numbers. We need a budget that invests in the supports our students and their families need, a budget that invests in mental health and housing, divests from developers, and includes progressive taxes. We are asking the city council to vote no on this budget because it does not uphold the values of our city and fails to bring the change that our neighborhoods and communities and the students in them need. We can do better. For years, city budgets have relied on austerity and regressive taxation and fees that have driven working-class people of color, including thousands of our district's students, out of Chicago. We are concerned that this is once again a budget that will fail our students and their families. This budget consists largely of one-time stopgap fixes, like refinancing the city's debt and cutting positions. It's also worth noting that whenever the city refinances, a private entity makes a profit from the city's debt, while students do without. They do without basics like social workers, adequate counseling, librarians in their schools. While we applaud the largest-ever TIF surplus in this year's budget, the reliance on last-minute TIF surpluses to save the day raises important questions about the future of this program that already fails in its objective to support blighted communities in favor of burgeoning areas like Lincoln Yards. The existence of a substantial TIF surplus every year suggests there are real problems with the concept and design of this program. We urge the mayor, a self-professed supporter of good government, to support an ordinance introduced by Matt Martin and George Cardenas and with 18 co-signers to date, that would take the TIF surplus return out of the realm of executive order and make it automatic on an annual basis. In a district that fails schools, that funds schools at 64% of adequacy, our students and their communities need resources every year, not just when it's politically expedient. Our students are not a bailout. After years of shortchanging, they cannot afford to wait for surpluses. The budget before you falls far short of the change Mary Lightfoot promised. It falls far short of the values we hold. I implore you to reject it.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Haas. The next speaker is Ms. Rosio Garcia.
Buenos dias. I'm Rosio Garcia with United Working Families. I am here to speak to you about the budget. Clearly, this budget that has been proposed is not working for all Black and Brown communities. I am with United Working Families, where we are representing our communities of color, where there is so much violence, where there is so much trauma, where there is poverty, and poverty turns into trauma. There is a need for mental health to be able to serve our communities where, when folks are feeling short of, feeling comfortable every day, they are not finding mental health opportunities in their communities. I have spoken with moms in Little Village who have said that they're trying to find a clinic, and they can't because there aren't any appointments available, and that is not okay. I am here to urge all of the city council to make a choice, to make a right choice. You're here today representing your communities, the communities that you worked so hard to be representing, and it is your job today to make sure that you're truly doing so. These communities are relying on you, on your vote, to bring to these spaces what is really needed. Not failing to bring home what our communities need fails our entire city of Chicago and sets us backward instead of forward, instead of being progressive. We're in one of the richest cities in one of the richest countries, and we are continuing to have a tale of two cities. When people come to visit the city of Chicago, you know what I tell them? I tell them, "Come to the South Side, come to the West Side, and really experience Chicago." Because Chicago in the loop, Chicago on the South Street, where the wealthy get away without paying their fair share, is not truly representative of a world-class city like Chicago. And so, in order for us to truly bring an overall experience to people who visit us, to our own people who are paying for your jobs, we need to give our community residents what they need, and that means making sure that we open our mental health clinics, that we're bringing opportunities for our homeless people, because currently, it is not okay that people live on our streets. It is not okay for three families to live in a single apartment home, sharing one bathroom, and feeling that that's an okay way to live. That's not okay. And every day, having to deal with the sounds of gunshots in our communities, that is also not okay. So, I urge you to make the right choice and vote no on this austerity budget that is only continue to put us back, instead of choosing a progressive budget that works for the many.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. The next two names I'll call are Ms. Ariel Atkins and Ms. Emma Ty.
Good morning. In the prayer that was just given, the young man asked for God to give jobs to the jobless and fathers to the fatherless. But what's not being said in that is that everyone in this room has the power to make that happen. Everyone in this room has the power to make sure that the fatherless have fathers. Instead, we are separating families through incarceration, that jobless have jobs, and yet we are giving money to luxury developers and outsourcing our businesses so that people in communities like Austin are living in extreme poverty because they don't have jobs, because they don't have money, because they don't have resources, and have to commit crimes of survival in order to just make it by. Are incarcerated and are released without resources so that they end up bringing home the violence that they experienced back to their homes, back to their families. We are traumatizing our people, specifically poor Black and Brown people, through incarcerating families, separating them, over policing. We spend $4.5 million a day on CPD, yet Lightfoot proposes in her budget to give $5 million to the homeless and $5 million to affordable housing, and I don't know about y'all, but that sounds ridiculous to me. That is absolutely nothing. If we can spend almost $5 million on policing, then we can spend the $1.3 billion that we have on people struggling with homelessness and struggling to find affordable housing. In neighborhoods that have resources, we don't see the same crime and violence that y'all complain about on the South Side and West Side. In neighborhoods like Lakeview and Ravenswood, when kids are breaking windows, which, so my kids broke my window, and yet they were just being teenagers. But in Austin, when kids were graffitiing in empty warehouse buildings, they were arrested and imprisoned just for being teenagers. There's an issue with that. I have an issue with that, and every single one of you should have an issue with that. If you vote yes on this budget, if you vote yes on this budget, you are telling every poor Black and Brown person in this city that they don't matter to you, that their lives don't matter. You're further dehumanizing them. And Lightfoot, you better get on the right track, because there are thousands of people that came out and marched to demand that you stick to the promises that you made, and yet you sit here and look directly at me and probably disregarding everything I'm saying, and it's foolish. It's messed up. We're coming for you like we came for Ramon Anita, so you better set up, baby.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. The next speaker is Ms. Emma Ty.
Good morning. My name is Emma Ty. I'm the executive director of United Working Families. I'm here today, I'm reminded of what brought me into politics, which was in 2013, I sat at the school board, the Board of Education, and watched as Black and Brown parents pleaded with an unelected school board to keep their schools open. Some of those folks who are at that meeting are here in this room today, and we're so happy of the spirit that they're bringing to the city council. But I went into politics because I watched as those elected, as those appointed officials sat and pulled parents away as they cried about their schools closing. And I'm angry today because we have to fight so hard for the things that we deserve, for the things that are our rights. I'm angry because Sterling Bay is getting $1 billion, while people who have been struggling with suicide and depression are waiting years to get into a mental health clinic. I'm angry because the corporate head tax is off the table, but somehow, parents whose children have asthma are worried that there's not going to be a nurse in their school the day that their child has an asthma attack, and the inhaler is locked up in a cabinet. That's not right, and that's why we need a budget for the many, and that's why we need progressive revenue, that's why we need investments in real services like affordable housing, homelessness, mental health clinics, and a stop to funding police violence and police abuse. It's what we need, it's what we deserve, and we're going to continue fighting until we get it. And the last thing I'll say is that I know that politics can feel petty. I know that there can be a real vendetta, and it can get real personal, but that's not what this is about for me. This is about those parents. I'm a parent, and my child will be a Chicago public school student in a matter of years, and we just need the things that we deserve. We want them, we deserve them, it's what we voted for. This is not an elected, this is not an appointed board, this is an elected board, and the people have spoken, and we're doing this by, for, and with the people, and for a budget for the many and not the few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. The next speaker is Mr. John Konzara, and Mr. Ricardo Flores. Please line up.
All right, happy early Thanksgiving, first of all. I come to this microphone on a regular basis, and all I hear is, "Police this, police that." Well, I don't agree with many things Mr. Jackson says, but I will say this: I agree on two points that he made. Guns are inanimate objects. They do not kill people. People kill people. The police department just announced that they had confiscated over 10,000 weapons this year alone, alone. That's double, New York, just for comparison, barely got over 3,000 guns, and they're twice the size of Chicago. This is a mindset within communities that this is an easy way to get money, whether it's rob, protected drug deals, and on the drug end of it, it's all intertwined. This council is so short-sighted and so eager to find a new source of revenue to pilfer waste and just spend with this whole marijuana cannabis act coming in January 1st. I was a witness to the debacle yesterday that Mr. Levine was heading on the legal end of it with the Public Safety Committee, trying to pass this ordinance going forward with the cannabis act. They couldn't even get their wording correct. They had to convene, reconvene three separate times to change the wording, and I still think there's loopholes, but everything's being rushed through in order to grab this money as quickly as possible and waste it. Now, back to the police. You want to blame the police for everything under the sun, but was it the police's fault that a convicted felon on parole, who should have been locked up, was let out early and just murdered some poor 19-year-old woman of color, because y'all like to play racial politics, a Hispanic female from Berwyn, raped her and strangled her in a UIC garage? This guy was convicted of robbery not even two years prior and was sentenced to six years, but was let out by the same justice system that the mayor now wants to endorse, good old Kim Fox, the policeman and the average citizen's best friend. It's a joke. This needs to stop. Again, I'm glad that the policeman made it home that was involved in the chase for the bank robber from Displanes last week, but like your previous mayor and the one before him, you guys like to use the microphones and the cameras when it's politically expedient to try and pretend like you really care about the police, and the woe is me when the cameras are showing and how much you support the police. Again, you jump through hoops for the teachers. What have you done for the police contract? Nothing. You have no desire to get it done whatsoever, because you could give a damn less. I pay a price for coming here to speak. I pay a price for coming here to speak. You want to talk about mental health? Mental health is a major issue, but coming to this microphone has now put me in jeopardy of my job and it has taken me off the street and my police powers have been removed and I'm on desk duty now because I come here and speak out and the Police Department doesn't like that. But on a daily basis, when I was in the 8th District, I encountered mental health patients that needed assistance. That is another thing that me and Mr. Jackson will agree on. You need to fund more mental health.
Thank you, Mr. Konzara. The next speaker is Mr. Ricardo Flores and Ms. Barbara Lacquer Ware. Please line up.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, and good morning, everybody here at City Council. My name is Ricardo Flores and I'm a local actor and a concerned Chicagoan. I am here to bring awareness of the lack of Latinos in the film industry and at CineSpace in Chicago. Also to oppose the parking lot expansion in Little Village for CineSpace. They should not expand or grow until they include the community. Latinos make about 30% of population in Chicago, yet we get less than 3% of speaking roles, even way less for lead roles. As a matter of fact, I think we have no lead roles in Chicago. There's a lot of tired people in our neighborhoods. We have writers that want to tell our stories, directors that want to bring our visions to TV, but are not given a chance. We even have skilled tradesmen that want to work there but are not the right shade. They're not the right complexion with the right connection. CineSpace even brings out of town-known union roofers to save a penny. They talk about racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, but CineSpace and the film industry stay selling the city a dream. They get 30% of tax credits to qualify productions and 30% credit in Illinois salaries up to $100,000 per worker, another 15% credit on salaries for those that live in areas with a high unemployment rate. 16,000 new local jobs, 42% women minorities, yeah, okay. But guess what? There've been people from out of town who move into our neighborhoods who then get hired and claim as a local. They love to film in Pelson, Little Village, Bryant Park, Logan Square, and Humboldt Park. They come to our neighborhoods, close down streets, and basically do a hostile takeover. Why can't we be part of the industry? We want to be able to tell our stories, we want jobs at CineSpace. We don't have a gang problem in Chicago. We have a putting these kids at risk to work problem in Chicago. Mayor Lightfoot, would it be too much if you could reverse the ordinance where the film industry shortcuts the ordermen in getting permits to film in their wards? Maybe with a little more say, they could call for more Latinos to be hired in the film industry, just how they did with the CTA. Thank you for your time and attention and remember, Chicago's not for sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. The next speaker is Ms. Barbara Lacquer Ware.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Lacquer Ware. I live in Edgewater and I'm a volunteer with One Northside. I'm speaking today to urge you to vote no on the city budget because it does not uphold the values, the people of Chicago who most need to be represented. We need a budget that supports people dealing with issues related to poverty and racism, mental health, and affordable housing. I am particularly concerned about the lack of funding for people experiencing homelessness. I work for an organization that provides supportive housing to youth and families who are homeless. During her campaign, Mayor Lightfoot promised to increase the real estate transfer tax in order to create a dedicated revenue stream for affordable housing and homelessness. I voted for her in part because of that promise. Yet she backed away from that and instead derailed a compromise proposed by 17 state legislators that would have raised $116 million for the budget and for the budget shortfall and $86 million to fund affordable housing and services for people experiencing homelessness. That $86 million is critically needed. Did you know Chicago is rated near the bottom for spending on homelessness compared with other cities? That is inexcusable. The city needs to get its priorities in order and address the needs of those who have been neglected for so long in favor of rich developers. We elected you to serve the people, not the corporations and developers. The city has publicly stated that it supports the effort to end homelessness. This can't just be a platitude. You must put your money where your mouth is. The mayor's budget includes only $5 million in new funding for efforts to address homelessness. That is embarrassing, especially when the real estate transfer tax could provide $86 million. I urge you to vote no on this budget and support a budget that brings equity and justice to Chicagoans who have been denied opportunities for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lacquer Ware. The next speaker is Kennedy Bartley. Kennedy Bartley.
I'm just here to tell Estelle's story. She wasn't able to sign up in time for public comment, so I thought I would share a bit of what she talked through with me this morning. So Estelle's been battling depression for much of her life, for as long as she says she can remember. She's 40 years old now, but since she was six, she recalls experiencing bouts of depression, panic attacks, heightened anxiety. She lives in the city of Chicago and has for much of her adult life. She talked through with me moments when she had suicidal ideations and even attempted suicides. And at that time, she tried to put her name on lists at much of the non-public mental health clinics throughout the city and she was put on a five-year waiting list. She shared with me how happy she is now that she is able to talk to someone regularly, but she also talked to me about how heavy her heart is for the folks who were receiving care at some of the closed clinics. And she said that while she's happy that she had the luck to be placed with a clinician, she doesn't think that people's lives should rest on luck. And that was quite profound to me and I hope that, I guess, sits with you all in the same way. People's lives shouldn't rest on luck and we can look to multiple stories of people's lives that were lost as a result of the closing clinics. So yeah, I just thought that I would share that all with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley. The next speaker is Mr. George Blakemore.
Good morning, Mr. Blakemore.
It's not a good morning. When black people are not receiving any of these marijuana licenses, it's not a good morning at all. It's sad. We're not getting anything, no economic development, and then the police is going to come up and going to arrest a lot of black people with the impression that it's legal marijuana. It's nothing going to be about illegal. You can't, you can't smoke on the street, you can't smoke your marijuana in other places. So the only place that you can smoke your marijuana is going to be in your home. And also, also, the federal government says you can't smoke in any public housing. So this is disgraceful. The blacks did not receive any contracts when it comes to this marijuana license and the whites got them a discipline and an additional one. This is institutional racism here. I'm outraged by what's going on here. It's not with this Democratic Party and what you political hacks here. There's no economic development in these black areas and we are legal citizens and you're bringing in another group that's illegal to compete with us for jobs, contracts, and services. Why? Why? Why are you so quiet, black people? Why are you so quiet and going along with this sanctuary? Why? You're a disgrace to the ancestors. Each one of you are a disgrace. How can you let another people come in and get these job contracts and services that you're entitled to? What's wrong with you? Something is wrong with you. Can you see what I see, black leadership? Can you hear what I hear, the pains of the ghetto? No economic development, not any nada in these concentration camps. God sent me here to tell you this. Why do you want illegal people to come in and compete with legal people? Legal black people that was denied our reparations, enslaved in America? Something is evil here. Something is mighty wrong here and the ancestors don't like it here. But God sent me here to speak so you black, whatever you call yourself, you're perpetrating...
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore. Thank you, everyone. The time allotted for public comment period has expired.
This concludes the public comment period. Communications?
A series of communications from our honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the City Council, the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing a scope of services, budget, and management agreement for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the termination of various TIF districts. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request, the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 20, 2019, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 26, 2019 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also transmit herewith the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Claims against the city of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance, an amendment of Municipal Code Section 9-68-020 concerning eligibility factors for issuance of residential zone parking permits, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Two committees called, it'll go to rules.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to suspend the rules to consider various items of unfinished business which were noticed and filed with the clerk pursuant to Rule 41, pertinent to the consideration and passage of the 2020 budget. They are as follows. One, a substitute amendment to the 2019 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Two, a substitute amendments to the 2020 budget recommendations and the Annual Appropriation Ordinance text portion. Three, the 2020 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Four, the substitute 2020 Management Ordinance. Five, amendments to the 2019 Tax Levy Ordinance. Six, the Bond Refunding Ordinance. Seven, the 2020 Tax Levy Ordinance. And eight, the 2020 Revenue Ordinance.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I ask that the council discuss at this time the entire budget package, which consists of the various matters I just identified. I reserve my right and Alderman Waggasback's right to close the discussion.
Chairman Dow, do you wish you begin the discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. I do. As I stand here today, I must thank your wonderful budget team, represented by Budget Director Susie Park, CFO Jenny Bennett, and City Controller Reshma Soni. I want to thank the Law Department, represented by Jeff Levine and Scott Spears, and I want to thank the Mayor's Office Team, represented by Tiffany Sastrin and Samantha Fields, for their hard work on this historic budget package. It was heartening to see firsthand the passion of my colleagues during the budget hearing process and beyond. Although we each represent different areas, neighborhoods, communities, and corners of our great city, we all have a common goal and that goal is to make Chicago a city we can all be proud of. We are a city of diversity, diversity of people, diversity of ideas, diversity of strengths, and we are all willing to stand in front and take on any challenges we face as a city. That's what I love about the city of Chicago. Throughout this budget process, we came together to offer ideas, to debate ideas, and strike a balance on ideas. That's what this budget does. It closes a monumental $838 million deficit primarily through lasting structural improvements while also making critical one-off fixes to the budget. The budget we are considering today offers a path to stability moving forward that meets all of our financial obligations while also investing in the priorities important to us as a city of Chicago. This budget is not a one-shot deal. This is not the end of the discussion on funding our city priorities. That discussion is ongoing and will continue throughout the year so that the 2021 budget continues to reflect who we want to be as a city. We all wish there were limited funds available to exceed the needs of every program that's important to us all, but unfortunately, that's just not the reality of today. The budget situation we find ourselves in requires each of us to make hard choices and deliver a balanced budget. We need to continue working with our partners and our stakeholders to make available the funding we all want to see. What we have today is a balanced budget, one that meets our growing needs and legally required financial obligations while increasing investment in key priority areas, and it does so without a massive property tax hike, without further burdening our taxpayers. I commend you, Madam President, Mayor, for all of your hard work on your inaugural budget. I also commend your commitment to a transparent budget process from the listening sessions in the community held throughout the city, through the online survey, which I didn't really think was going to get a lot of traction, but it went very far, and meeting with the various caucuses. We appreciate all of that. I also want to acknowledge my City Council colleagues for their active participation, their dedication and flexibility in the budget process. And I want to personally thank Chairman Austin and Chairman Harris for their support and counsel. Finally, I urge all of my colleagues to vote yes on this budget, which does what we wanted to do, which is to move the city forward. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support this budget 100%. I'm glad to have heard now, I was changing my structure of my statement, from our now chairman, Chairman Pat Dow. I'm grateful that she's allowed me to pour into her whatever knowledge that I have to assist her with this monumental budget. In that, all of our colleagues have worked to try to balance this budget. I'm glad for the input that she gave to each and every one of us. When there was a question, she didn't rush us through, she tried to answer and assist the ones that were asking questions regarding a particular issue. She did that in a way, ma'am, that made everybody comfortable, as that this budget is not just about her running the budget committee, but us all balancing a budget. Ma'am, your team, your and the financial team, worked with us very closely so that we all could understand what was at stake. And for that being at stake, that's a big number. I thought I started out with a big number, but this was a big number. So I would have to say that each and every one of us worked to do just what have been done, balance a budget. Now, there are many that say, "Well, I didn't get this, I didn't get that, I didn't do this and I didn't do that." this, and I didn't do that. And I was one to say that in regards to mental health, because if there's nowhere for any individual out in the far south side of Chicago to have a facility where they can go and receive their medication or treatment. But I can say that Alderman Dow worked with me very closely to make sure that there were satellite offices for those individuals. It's a heavy lift, but I believe that every one of us can stand behind it and say that a job well done. Is it perfect? I have never seen a perfect budget. But is this one the best that we can do? Can we try harder? Absolutely. I have said this many times before, this is a living document, and it can always be assisted more and more in the future to correct things for the people that we represent. I want to thank Alderman Wagasback, because I didn't think that he could carry a tune in a bucket.
I think that's a compliment somehow.
I want to thank our finance chairman, because he worked very closely with us as well. He made sure that every issue that we brought up that would be answered. He didn't rush through not one committee hearing, and I'm glad for that. I'm glad that for the openness that he showed to us, each and every one of us, I'm grateful for that. I know that others would get up and make statements of what they like and what they don't like. I have never sat here in these 25 years and heard one that didn't do it. Everybody likes something, everybody don't like something. That's what a budget does. But I believe that all of us can say that this is truly a balanced budget that we all have worked towards and bringing it to an end. Madam President, I know that everybody thought that me and you was going to go head to head, but that wasn't going to happen. I stand by the statement that I said when you were running for election. I would be your number one supporter. I'm glad that I'm your number two supporter. I'm grateful for all of you all being here, because I've seen something that come out of each and every one of you all that I haven't seen before, because it pissed me off. Because you didn't take a stand when it became Deloitte and Dootch. We should never allow anybody to have a 20-year contract in this city. We need to break that up no matter what. We should never allow anyone, any company, to have a 20-year contract. Not in we don't look into it, not that we don't see the diversity in it. And believe you me, with this new committee, I intend to see some diversity. So I know that for the things that you have done, for what you have tried to do in this city, to bring everything to the people who elect us by your town hall meetings, they were involved, they gave their concerns, their questions, and it wasn't just to some of your staff, it was to you, and that made a difference. I'm glad for the people that were in the far south side, that they traveled with you to various locations, to hear what you had to say. And I know that these council members that are here have heard what you say. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman. Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this budget. And first of all, I want to thank, starting at the top with you, Mayor, for presenting such a good budget, but also for allowing us to have the input, and you sitting down directly with us in your office, going over this budget and allowing us to ask any questions that we want. It was a very transparent process, and for that, I appreciate you. Be careful to call too many names, but Samantha Fields, who phone constantly rings off the hook, but always she answers and help us through this process. You have done a yeoman's job, Samantha, and I applaud you heavily. Our budget director, our CFO, Susie Park, Jenny Hong Bennett, all your other staff members, like Manny Perez, stepping up anytime we needed him. I just want to thank everybody on that team for keeping us involved, getting us questions that we asked back in a timely fashion. I truly take my hand off to our new budget chair, Pat Dow. She did such a yeoman's job, or as Reverend Evans would say, a Herculean job, in terms of how she ran this process and overseeing it. And for that, Alderman Dow, I applaud you heavily. Our finance chair, Scott Wagasback, as always, as we work together in a progressive caucus, your knowledge of this budget, whether before and during this process, has always been a, you have always been a voice that we could go to. So again, totally appreciate you, as Alderman Chairman Kerry Austin has stated. I want to say one thing. No one got everything that they wanted in this budget. And I didn't get everything that I wanted. Yes, I wanted a surcharge on hotels, be it 50 cents or a dollar, so that we can, thank you, so that we can get additional funding that goes towards development, youth hiring, and art programs. Didn't get it. I wanted another four-time position, because definitely many of us need it. We didn't get it. The activists and the organizations and other advocates, they feel they didn't get everything that they wanted, calling us on the phone, don't vote, don't do this, don't do that. But guess what, you all? What I'm excited about in all of that, although we didn't get all those things, and this is to the whole city of Chicago, CTU, everybody, you have a mayor that wants to do it. Now, how we go about making this sausage, we may not agree on it. But at the end of the day, when you have a mayor who wants the same things that you want, yes, it's going to take some time. All of this stuff didn't happen overnight. I screamed for the things that I didn't get, and I'm going to continue to scream for those. I'm going to continue to scream for another $4 million to go towards gun violence, but for me, that money's to go toward youth hiring and communities where there's high violence and high unemployment. But guess what? Today, as I think it was Chairman Austin said, this is not the be-all, the end-all. We continue to move on, and we continue to work with this mayor to get those things that she talked about and that she believes in. This is a good budget, because everybody know, I'm not scared I'll go on record. I wanted a property tax increase. But, 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 but this mayor fought back and said, no, we're going to give our people a break, we're going to find ways, structurally, not one time, but structurally, structurally. Eight, $500 million? I said that in another budget committee, come on. I think that's historical, to cut, to find efficiencies. And that part, you all, we cannot sleep on. We cannot. And I commend this administration, I commend this mayor, and I am happy to support and vote yes for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to say no to this budget. I read the Sun-Times last week. The Sun-Times said that this is a precarious budget. The Tribune said that this budget was put together to duct tape. Mr. Blakemore just said, do you see what I see? I don't know if you all see what I see. But let me give you a few examples of what I see. We started this year with over a billion-dollar deficit. With reforms and changes, we got it down to 838. With one-time revenue fixes, inflated revenues, taking $93 million from the school systems, zero-based budgeting, again, over-inflated projections, with a small tax increase, and a sweeping, whopping TIF surplus. With all of that, we stated that when we go to Springfield, if we didn't get what we wanted, that we would have to look at property tax. Well, we went to Springfield, and we didn't get what we wanted. We got zero from the surplus, I'm sorry, we got zero from the real estate transfer tax. We got zero from what my good friend Willie Wilson says, a casino that we didn't get. But we know that the casino revenue was for future revenues and not this particular budget. But at the same time, we didn't get it. Springfield asked, why didn't we do an RFP on the casino? I asked that we do an RFP, because you never know what kind of fish you might catch just by putting an RFP out there. You might have got somebody that said, just maybe, we can look at doing something with the formula that was in place. So now, here we are, again, with an $838 million deficit. How in good earth can we add jobs at a time like this? We are supposed to do more with less when we have deficit and not rely on the people to bail us out. How in the heck can we even think about adding to an expense account for each and every Alderman when we have a deficit like this? Once again, we should do more with less. How do we reopen libraries on Sunday to the tune of $18 million, when they were closed on Sundays because of lack of participation and a drain on our budget? Well, we could have taken that same $18 million and opened up some mental health clinics that the people are screaming about, screaming to get the people off our streets that are having mental issues that need to be addressed. We're losing tens of millions of dollars in water collections every single day because of some of the reforms that we put in place. The one thing that troubles me out of everything in this budget, with everything that's going on in this budget, how can we in good conscience vote on revenue for marijuana when not one person of color is benefiting from the marijuana in this state? Not one person of color is benefiting from a substance that has incarcerated hundreds of thousands of people of color, and then we legalize it, can't get any revenue from it, but yet, we're going to pass this? This is not a legislative body. This is a go-along body. Do you see what I see? So now, with an 800-pound gorilla in the room, which is the $163 million that we're waiting to get from the federal government, you know, I asked that we postpone this budget just to see how long it would take if we get this $163 million. A wise man in my ward told me just last night that he recalled that Harold Washington had a budget that passed December 30th at 9 o'clock at night, because this body was working to balance a budget. What's the hurry if we anticipate in getting this $163 million? What's the hurry to wait a couple of extra weeks to get this done? We have until the end of the year. Well, I tell you what, if we don't get that $163 million, you all are going to be raising property taxes on the backs of our people, and then, how many accolades are we going to have in this body? When we have to balance this budget on the backs of the people once again? So what's the hurry? Let's wait to see what the federal government's going to do. We have great expectations with this budget. We have great expectations that we were, once again, going to get the casino. We had great expectations that we're going to get the real estate transfer tax. We have great expectations that we're going to get money from the federal government. This is not a balanced budget. This is a budget with a bunch of holes that are going to have to be filled at a later date. I know it's easy to take a vote like this, but the people didn't send us down here to take easy votes. They didn't send us down here to take the easy way out. The people sent us down here to be bold, to be brave, to show real leadership. People are not looking for us to turn our backs on a budget that is not balanced just to say it was an easy vote. So ladies and gentlemen, I ask that you reconsider your positions. I ask that you show real, bold leadership and vote no on this budget that is filled with smoke and mirrors. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sedlasky Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I rise in support of this budget. Quite frankly, this is the easiest vote I've ever taken in four years. First, I have to give a shout out, I don't mean to be redundant, but you deserve accolades. Chairman Pat Dow, again, thank you for your transparency. I was impressed by your level of collaboration and your willingness to answer every single question. And for those of you that don't know, she was at every single briefing, she was at every single budget hearing, every ward, didn't matter what part of the city it was at, she was there to listen. So I commend you for that, Madam Chairman. This vote is easy for me, because we closed an $838 million budget deficit with no layoffs. Three months ago, people were worried that they would be out of a job. I know many of us were getting phone calls from a lot of people that lived in our ward, is she going to lay anybody off, any layoffs? How's streets in sand? Anybody going to be let go here? Anybody going to be let go there? Not one person was laid off. That's a huge accomplishment, Madam President. We fought for many years to raise the minimum wage. I was on that fight. Full disclosure, I was arrested fighting for minimum wage in this building. My colleague next to me said, people that don't accept a half loaf of bread to eat will go to bed hungry. I'm proud to claim the win, that today, because of Alderman King's hard work, we are going to pass $15 an hour for working-class families across Chicago. Thank you. We're investing in Chicago Public Libraries, so they'll be open on Sunday, so our kids have a place to go that's safe. We're investing in mental health outreach. When I talked to Dr. Arwadi, quite frankly, I was worried about mental health, I am worried about mental health, and we need to continue investing. You're right, Chairman Austin, this is a work in progress. This is not, this is, just because we take one vote today does not mean that this is not, we can't keep moving forward on issues. This is a living, breathing document. We're investing in violence prevention. We're investing in environmental protection. We're investing in city services in each and every ward. That's what that money will do, make sure that we can provide better services for our constituents. I have the largest ward in the city, and I'm happy that that's happening. The biggest TIF surplus that the city has ever committed to. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chairman Wagasback. This budget is not perfect in any way, shape, or form. I've never seen a perfect one, you're right. But it's a step in the right, maybe even the left direction. In the coming years, as the votes get harder, I look forward to collaboration, new ideas, and progressive forms of revenue. And I know if we work collaboratively, collaboratively, we can get there. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Robeos.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand here in support of this budget today for more than one reason. I too stand here in support of this budget today for more than one reason. Madam President, when you first came into office, there were very, there were folks that were thinking, "Wow, can she handle this budget? Can she lead our city to the next, uh, future of our city? Can you do the job?" Well, let me say this, you took on the challenges. You made decisions through this body. You heard what we needed. And your folks that are there, the finance portion, the IGA group, they made this happen along with you, and I thank you for that. And the people in Chicago should be proud that we're moving forward. I also support the challenges that you took on, but more importantly, the mayor, the members who took on the budget hearings. I want to thank the new members of the City Council for being part of this. I commend you for all that. And I hope you see the vision that I see for the future. It doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen in one term, but you'll need, you'll need to know that we're all gonna learn from this one. But as a member of the City Council for five terms, I want to commend you and your entire team, the financial team, but most importantly, I want to talk about the $9 million that we're gonna address with Public Safety, because we need that. 13,000 police members are out there, and Mayor, I know that you know, and the members of our council here understand, that we need to help those folks that are doing the job in the city of Chicago, the police officers that we, that we have. I want to thank Pat Dowell, the entire team, once again, for the job that you did, and we will continue to do for this council. And Mayor, finally, I say that we have the finest police department in the city of Chicago. We need to support them. We need to think about the challenges that they face in the street on a day-to-day basis, and we want to support them. Please vote yes on this budget. You will not be making a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too stand in support of this budget. My very first conversation with you, Mayor Lightfoot, was focusing on mental health. I have a master's in social work in my, with an emphasis on mental health, and we talked about the need to be data-driven. The truth of the matter is, I focused on mental health and got my master's in social work because of mental illness in my own family. Last Saturday was International Survivors of Suicide Loss Day, and it was profound for me, for the very first time in my life, to be in a room full of other people who experienced the loss of a loved one through suicide. But the truth of the matter is, all of us, all of us in this room knows someone who is experienced, who has experienced a mental illness and who has threatened suicide or who has committed suicide. For years, it's been said that when it comes to addressing mental health, we work in silos as a city. This budget addresses that. This budget provides a coordination of the city's mental health system to increase equity and access. And along with this budget, there's, there's an item now that gets the word out about mental health so that anyone who needs mental health services can get that. The problem that we have in this city is that so many people do not know where they can get that access, and you have provided funds to do that, which is very, very important. This budget also goes into developing violence prevention programming. It addresses the hopelessness that many youth experience who have experienced PTSD, who are caught in the cycle of violence, who are also caught in the cycle of gangs. This provides them with some help. These are the people who don't readily access mental health centers. They don't know to go to those mental health centers. That's why you've provided a way to help those very people in need. And it truly addresses the tale of two cities that the city of Chicago experiences, suffering from the weight of past trauma. This is not a budget where everyone gets what they want. To be honest, I would be suspicious of any type of a budget that does that. It can't, it's not possible. When I, when I went to the Harvard Kennedy School of Government back in 2012, they talked about how easy it is to vote no on something, but how much harder it is to negotiate, to get to a win-win, or at least get to a point where everyone loses a little bit. This budget does that, and that's why I so wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Byron Cicchill Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to also echo some of the comments that my colleagues made, Alderman Maria Haddin, Alderman Mike Rodriguez. I also want to thank Alderman Pat Dowell for chairing those meetings and showed transparency and discussion and dialogue, and I hope we continue to do that. As a new alderman that represents the 25th Ward, a strong immigrant working-class community, as an immigrant myself, who came to this country when I was 17-years-old, I see the importance of our institutions, public education, mental health services, affordable housing. Without those safety nets, I wouldn't be here in front of you today. And that is why I am not satisfied with this budget. I do want to recognize the mayor's effort to balance this budget without more property tax increases. I also commend the mayor for putting $15 an hour minimum wage as a priority, and also for her commitment for ethics reform. I can relate to the fact that we inherited a huge mess, highest deficit in history. I deal with bad decisions in my ward, in my community, every day, and I know we have a huge challenge ahead. I hear some of my colleagues talking about an easy budget, but let me tell you that outside these walls, for Chicagoans in this city, it is not easy. Just a few days ago, one of the developers that was a beneficiary of the previous administration did not do the minimum affordable housing, was also trying to evict a 72-year-old senior in the middle of the winter. So how are we gonna address the issue of affordable housing when it's not our priority? Now, understand that we don't have unlimited resources. However, we gotta define our priorities. As a City Council member, I got my priorities very clear because I see my constituents every day coming for resources, from Chinatown to Pilsen to the West Loop, the lack of affordable housing, the lack of resources for mental health services, and it's painful to be silent and thinking, "What are we actually gonna do for them?" I know, Mayor, you have a huge challenge ahead. I think all of us do. I do think that there are revenue options that we can put at the table, progressive revenue options that we campaigned on, that will help us in the long run to have structural and long-term solutions to the challenges that we inherited. But this budget, for us and for people across the city, need to reflect our values and principles and commitment to address these solutions long-term. There's no more road to kick the can. We all know that, and that's why I want to make sure that we define our priorities from day one. That's what I was elected to do, and I look forward to having positive, healthy discussions with administration on how we accomplish our goals. And I thank you all my colleagues, I have heard not only from my constituents, but colleagues that have been here before me, and I look forward to defining these challenges, defining these priorities together. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. So I rise not to, I think, share my colleagues' points about the many positive aspects of this budget because they are bountiful. I rise to share my frustrations with the budget, and they're frustrations that I think almost everyone I've spoken with to a T shares. Things around overtime that is rampant and unchecked with our police department and our fire department, and I want to emphasize that it's, it's not a frustration with individuals within those particular departments, it's, it's about this larger systems that they find themselves in, and systems that we as a broader city government are in the process of reckoning with, including you, Mayor, and many people on your staff. The rising cost of lawsuits for officer misconduct, alleged inaction, and inadequate investment in affordable housing, especially in communities like mine which have more resources than many, but not the sort of resources to maintain and expand affordability, which was a big reason why I'm here. Also, my frustration with our inability to bring in more progressive revenue, understanding that we have done some with TIF surplus in a tremendous way, I think we can do more, our inability to get RET passed despite the efforts of many people within and outside of the administration to do that. These are reasons why I'll be voting no, but notwithstanding that, I think that I would be remiss if I didn't emphasize as many of my freshman colleagues the profound appreciation I have for the folks I've chatted with, folks like Chair Dowell, CFO Bennett, Deputy Mayor Maya Carr, Director Park, Tiffany Sastran. Voting no is challenging for me because it's, I mean, and emotional as well, because communicating that vote does not, in my opinion, reflect the sort of time and effort that those individuals have put into the budget and with me personally. When you've listened to me and you've spoken candidly with me, it's, it's not easy. And so, with tremendous respect to my colleague Alderman Kappelman, a no vote is not easy. But with these conversations, it, it gives me hope and confidence in the months and years to come that we'll be able to build on the progress that's represented in this budget and bring in the sort of structural changes that I mentioned earlier. And before I cede the floor to somebody else, I want to kind of mention some of the expectations I have for myself in particular because I think some of my no vote, to be honest, is a reflection of my own failure in terms of my inability, albeit in a short process, to put together information and to sell colleagues on some of the ideas that I mentioned earlier. So, as many folks know, I like to spend time walking the aisles, talking with people, soliciting your advice, and pitching you on particular issues. I, I hope that despite this vote, you'll continue to be open-minded and work with me because my hope is that certainly starting January 1st, if not earlier, that I'll be in a position based in large part on this process that Chair Dowell and others put together to help effectuate these things, because with things like the corporate head tax, I know that there are real reservations with that, and with things like pilot, with other TIF surplusing approaches, and I want to make sure that I do a better job of pitching that so that next year I'm in a position, hopefully, to vote yes. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, Chairwoman Dowell, and Chairman Wagasback. In the past month and more so this week, I've had conversations with hundreds of neighbors in our city and in the 40th Ward. Every single one of them seems to carry a tension on their shoulders when they ask me how the budget is looking. They remind me that I was elected to change the way this city works and who it works for because they are tired of getting the short end of the stick. Year by year, they pay more taxes and get less for it. They know that we have an enormous financial crisis and they want solutions that address it. It's why in 2019, there was a progressive wave in Chicago politics, one that both our mayor and I were a part of. We began our elected lives on the same day, and six months later, we are here to vote on a budget. Madam Mayor, I want to commend you and thank you, your team, Chairwoman Dowell, Chairman Wagasback, and their team, for this year's budget process. Many of my veteran colleagues have stated how much of an improvement this budget cycle has been compared to past administrations. I deeply respect your commitment to bringing together a budget without the backroom deals and horse trading for votes we've seen in years past. Thank you for that. My concern with this budget is that it does not deliver the structural change our city's residents demanded of us. We are patching holes with one-time fixes and with flat regressive taxes on goods and services like ride shares and restaurants, and we are doing it without making significant improvements in the civil services our cities deliver, or city delivers. In fact, although we are not laying off workers, we are cutting vacancies, have implemented a hiring freeze, and are slowing down the hiring rate for the whole year as part of the Budget Plan B. These freezes fall heaviest on the boots-on-the-ground service providers while we continue to add management positions with the creation of new city departments. We cannot deliver the kinds of services our residents deserve by freezing the labor pool and growing the city bureaucracy. No one in my ward asked me to vote to raise property taxes this year. It might be a surprise to some. No one asked for a nickel here, dime there consumption taxes. No one asked for a police budget greater than the combined budgets of our Health, Family and Support Services, Water, Streets and Sanitation, Housing, Building, and Cultural Affairs Departments combined. My ward's residents asked for a budget that reined in spending on an unaccountable police department and offered serious new progressive revenue options to fund robust, reliable city services from mental health to transportation. My colleagues and I introduced corporate head tax and payment in lieu of taxes, bills this year that were not even discussed or debated, much less seriously considered for inclusion. I cannot in good conscience for a budget that, vote, I cannot in good conscience vote for a budget that increases the taxes our working families pay and fails to substantially improve our city services when the wealthiest residents and corporations in Chicago are not being asked to pay their fair share. With respect for this budget season's process and for the substantial challenges faced in it by our mayor and my colleagues, I must respectfully, as a representative of my constituents, vote no.
The chair recognizes Alderman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by stating that my vote in this budget is motivated by the belief that, as it was said by a religious leader, whose name unfortunately I don't remember, on inauguration day, she said, "We are enough, and we have enough." I respect the energy and labor that has been put into this budget. I am grateful for every conversation I had with my colleagues, as each of those helped me understand this budget and the process of my first time navigating it. It was hard. Thank you, Chairman Dowell, for your hard work on this process and for being so accessible to all of us. It made it so much easier. I recognize the efforts put into a budget that doesn't include layoffs and that the property taxes it includes are not significant, but we are still asking working people who in many cases are on the edge of leaving their communities to pay. I am voting no on this budget, and my no vote on this budget is motivated by the idea that we can live in a city that provides for everyone, where we can have public mental health care, where the clinicians who take care of our people can afford to take care of themselves, a city that spends what is needed to have housing for everyone, a city that tackles the threat of climate change with the resources and urgency it calls for, a city where tip workers, mostly women of color, don't have to endure sexual harassment every day in order to put food on the table, a city where poor people of color are not displaced from the neighborhoods they call home. We have been surviving years after years of neoliberal policies that have wrecked public services, closed schools and mental health clinics, and poor people are poorer and rich people are doing better than ever. People are impatient at this point, people don't have any more time to give us to bring the transformation we need so desperately, but we keep telling them to wait. I believe that this budget should have included more progressive revenue measures that we so desperately need, but we didn't get there. So I can in good conscience support a budget that falls short in addressing the massive needs of our people when we left so much possible revenue on the table. I am, however, hopeful that we will move forward and continue to fight for the city we deserve, where wealthy people finally pay their fair share for the benefit of everyone. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Laspata.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I, I want to start by echoing these great words of thanks, particularly to Chairwoman Pat Dowell. I want to start by echoing these great words of thanks particularly to Chairwoman Pat Dowell. David Scott, Alderman Scott, used the term Herculean to describe your efforts, and the strength and the fortitude and the patience you put into this budget process certainly reflects that. As someone who is five months into this work, I never felt treated as less than an equal participant, and so I really appreciate that. As I was thinking about how I was going to vote on this budget, I tried to listen to as many voices as possible. I started by listening to the voices of those in my ward who talked to me at thousands of doors over the course of this winter and spring. I thought about how they spoke to me about housing, hearing from those with $900 mortgages and $1,300 property tax bills who cannot afford to stay in our city anymore. I thought about those who expressed great compassion for our homeless neighbors, who need to see us invest in the housing and services that are keeping so many on the streets and indeed thousands of CPS students homeless. And I thought about how they spoke to me about violence prevention. For the violence in our ward and across this city, I admired their empathy and their thoughtfulness, that they know that as great of work as our police officers are doing, that it only goes so far and that we need to fully fork, fully fund the work of organizations like ALSO that do violence interruption, like Ready that compare or combine cognitive behavioral therapy with real workforce development. And when I tell them that in our city, in this budget, we spend less than a penny for every dollar we spend on policing, there is no one I talk to who could accept that ratio of investment. But I also listened to the advice and the counsel of my colleagues, because so many of you talked to me about this, this is an easy vote, it's the easiest vote you've seen, and you talked about the austerity that we're dealing with this time of belt tightening. And I really respect that because for those of you who were here in 2008, 2009, 2015, I cannot imagine the stress and the anxiety that went into the decisions that you had to make in those budgets. Those were really hard budgets that you were asked to carry, and I respect that. For me, this is honestly just as hard of a vote because as I spent so many days talking a narrative of transformative progressive revenue and really investing deeply in the lives of poor and working families, to vote yes today would betray those conversations. And that is not something that I'm prepared to do this early in my political life. But I also have to reject that narrative of austerity because we live in boom times in the city of Chicago. We are flourishing. You live through votes in genuine austerity. And I know that there are a small percentage of individuals and corporations that are generating unprecedented wealth in this city. And I refuse to be handed a narrative of austerity by them because they simply choose to not pay their fair share in this city. Now, I also know that faith is the assurance of things hoped for, and I'm closing. And I have great faith in this council and I have faith in you, Madam Mayor, that we are going to spend every day of the next year working towards a budget that really invests in a city that is grounded in equity and justice, and I will hold myself accountable to that work as well. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to first thank you, Mayor, for this great process, Chairman Dowell, Chairman Wagasback. As I mentioned, this has been a great process. And with this new council, I think that you'll see as we move forward that we look forward to hearing those ideas, looking at legislation that's being proposed, having to debate, and then having those votes come to life. A little more than six months ago, the mayor called the city to come together to begin the urgent task of building a Chicago that was more transparent, equitable, and prosperous for every community and every resident and every corner of the great city. Fast forward to today, and this administration is putting forward a progressive, responsible budget that maximizes the efficiency of our city's government, prioritizes structural reforms, ensures we maintain the quality of services our residents depend on, and does everything it can to prevent hard-working Chicagoans from bearing the burden as we strive to put our city finances back on track. While Chicago's financial challenges are not new, this year's budget presented historical challenges with an $838 million deficit. Decades in the making. Decades in the making to get to 838 million. Under the mayor's leadership, this year's city budget strikes an important balance in terms of finding efficiencies, making necessary investments in our communities, and also going after progressive, not regressive, new revenues that will help to put Chicago's finances onto a more sustainable path without forcing another large property tax increase. These new revenues support new investments which speak to values as our values as a city. Importantly, these investments will flow directly into the neighborhoods to enhance the quality of life and safety for city residents. Some of the key investments include $10 million in expanded affordable housing and services to reduce homelessness. Is that enough? No, but it's a step in the right direction. And while the Springfield session begins in January, we look forward to going down to Springfield and advocating for this RET. We need that revenue, and we need to deal with this homelessness issue. 9.3 million to devoted resources to a new comprehensive mental health framework that will increase access and address a shortage of mental health care. Working with our union partners asks me to try to find out the requests that they had, how can we get to the middle and begin to address this issue of mental health? 9 million standoff comprehensive violence reduction strategy to address the root causes of these issues plaguing our communities. Importantly, this year's spending plan was informed by a first-ever inclusive budgeting process which gathered input from 7,300 residents who took place on an online budget survey and more than 2,600 residents who participated in five budget town hall forums, including one specifically for young people. Beyond that, this budget demonstrates the mayor's and this body's commitment to looking beyond just this year's spending plan and focusing on the next three to four years, ensuring we act as good stewards of taxpayer dollars to put Chicago back on fiscal stability. While this budget goes a long way in identifying savings and efficiencies from within, make no mistake that this is not sustainable, and Chicago requires new and sustainable revenue to address our growing liabilities. That's why the city is committed to continuing discussions with state leadership and the governor on casino, real estate transfer tax, and to find ways to generate new revenues for the city without imposing another significant property tax hike on Chicago residents. The mayor campaigned on and talked about not having a rubber stamp as a city council. We're all legislators here, and as you begin to talk about your ideas on creating revenue or whatever idea you have, there's a legislative process that we have to adhere to. You've got to introduce your legislation, get the support, and then ultimately have it voted on. That's the process. To sit here and talk about you want this and you want that, that's not the process. Introduce legislation so that way we can have a full debate on this thing. That's what I want to challenge our legislators on because of the simple fact that the mayor talked about, not a rubber stamp. This is a legislative body. So as we move forward in this new budget, we'll be taking a look at holding some subject matter hearing expert, testimony rather, on some of the issues and some of the ideas that have been proposed regarding progressive revenue. It'll be held in my committee so we can talk about it and vet it out and find out what other revenue ideas are possible. Listen, we all want to find new revenue and take a look and find another lever to pull, but the reality is this is what we have right now. And so we can sit here and have this debate. Remember this, the mayor's been in office for six months. This budget here addresses a lot of the core issues that we all ran on. So I ask for an I vote on this budget, and I look forward to working with my members as we take a look at identifying new progressive ideas. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the city council. I rise here today in support of Chicago. After three hours, I had to make sure everyone was awake. But seriously, in support of our city, in support of our neighborhoods, in support of our taxpayers and its residents, and in support of what truly could have been a transformative, honest, and transparent process that someone with a mandate could have used. That is not what we're presented with today, which is why, Madam President, I am in full, unequivocal opposition to this entire package being presented today. Gone are the days when independents would stand and say, "We had to be prepared, we had to be guardians of the taxpayers," when people would say that agendas were set and discussion was already pre-planned. And while I wish you would have stayed in the room to hear it, it are those same individuals that are leading the process today, and that is fine. Same stamp, different day. What we've seen in this budget is that, for starters, it's a violation of the law. This budget is not balanced. This budget, as many of my colleagues and I have stated from the very beginning, isn't just precariously balanced, it's completely unbalanced to the tune of $163 million if you were to take at face value what this administration has presented. If you wanted to look at it from a different way, it's not unbalanced. It's the greatest trick we've seen so far because it's loaded with 1,900 jobs costing taxpayers $200 million more dollars that we have no intention of ever spending. My colleagues have said, "Well, we're getting $10 million for this program, $8 million for that program, $3 million." We have $200 million sitting in this budget that would solve the needs of everyone who is not allowed to be in this chamber today to talk about this budget. $200 million that each and every one of us have to justify back to our residents to say, "We're overcharging you, and we know it." Now, this administration has said it will impact safety, it will impact delivery of service. That is a lie. It's a lie because all of those positions have not been filled for the past year, and to say that it is magically somehow going to change the way this city operates is foolishness and deception at its finest. Not honesty, not transparency, not what this city voted for, and not what someone was given a mandate to use. It is the same trick on a different day because this is not a historic budget, this is a déjà vu budget of the same perils that have brought us to this point year after year after year and after year. Administration from one to the next to the present that we're speaking to. This is not what taxpayers need, it's not what our communities need. All it is is rebranding and rehashing the same nonsense one year to the next. This cannot be how we govern the city of Chicago, how we work together. People expect better, people demand better, our communities need better. And take it from somebody who has, who I still believe, one of the poorest wards in the city of Chicago. They don't want to see the same nonsense rebranded. We don't want to see the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund rebranded as Invest Out West like it's something brand-new that nobody's ever thought of before. We don't need to see the Office of Violence Prevention rebranded when it was a program already in existence from three years ago. We need bold ideas. We need to tackle the problems head-on and not just say that this is the feel-good budget to get us through this year so that we can all rest easy after six months of starting this term. We know what's coming down the pipe. Before, the fire brands used to say, "This is the calm before the storm. This budget is the easy budget before the truth hits the wall." And it is coming fast and furious. Not just the financial obligations that are out there, the looming multi-million-dollar payments that'll be in next year's budget, the ones that you won't be able to deal with because all the one-offs have already been done in this year's budget, but the impact on the community. Yes, mental health centers are important. Individuals in this room voted to close them eight years ago. We have a chance to address that now, and we're not doing it. But the impact that that will have and the impact that the violence will have and the impact that looking at everything we do while trying to justify to the residents who are most impacted why we're able to give $150 million more to the police department when we barely spend $150 million to satisfy all the sanitation needs in the city of Chicago is an unacceptable presentation to make to our communities. We are spending our way backwards on a feel-good budget rather than focusing on the facts as they are laid bare before us. The facts that we are ignoring revenue options, even in finance, a discussion even with an unruly partner as Uber and Lyft and Rideshare. This council has found ways to mandate participation. We have found ways to mandate community investments, and I'm sure we could have found a way to force them, to compel them, to meet the agreement that they had proposed at the last hour. We have ways, we have means, and yes, we can legislate to do that, which is what we're charged with. But rushing to hit an artificial deadline so that dissent is limited, discussion is stifled, and progress is impeded is not what this city, not the direction the people of this city wanted to go. Think about all of that as many of you are voting yes today because if 163 million doesn't happen and if the rosy projections laid bare by the administration don't come true, there will be a supplemental ordinance saying property taxes have to go up. Or it will be 1,000 positions are finally truthfully going to be cut and not rebranded and refurbished in this budget. Deal with the truth now before we're coming back before December, the end of December, to address it then. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, this is my 17th year, and I got to be honest with you, man, things have changed. Long have the days that we sat here and voted on budgets that met our obligations, and kudos to you, Madam President, for being the most progressive mayor, to be honest. I've been here 17 years, and I should know. There is no selling of any assets in this budget. There's no raising of any property taxes in this budget. There are no layoffs in this budget. Because in prior budgets, many of you who sit in here today voted, and I did as well, on selling our precious assets to balance our obligations, to meet our obligations from the city. Those contracts and those folks that service our streets that turn on the lights, that plow during heavy snowstorms so that your residents can get out and go to work. Because at the end of the day, that's what we have to do. We were sent here to govern, to serve them and to protect them, to become leaders of their communities, the ones that they can depend on when something goes wrong, when neighbors are fighting, when sidewalks are not in good repair, when something's going on at the schools and in the parks, when violence erupts, they call us. And you know who pays for all of that? The budget that you're voting on today. And in this budget, you still, you ask, many of you ask, more for affordable housing. It's in there. And many of you who are voting no today want in more for mental health. It's in there. And many of you who are voting on this budget no today ask for more money for their budgets, and it's in there today. And many of you are going to take And many of you are going to take the pay raise that's going to be before you, January 1st, I guarantee that, but you're still voting no today. And that's the part that I don't understand, being here 17 years, the hypocritical part, and many of us here that talk about in platitudes and idealisms when the reality is that the city must move forward. This city cannot stop. We must continue to change and challenge ourselves to do better, always do better. Mayor, you came here on a landslide win because Chicagoans won better. They won reform, they want to stop the corruption. I've looked at property taxes, by the way, and I'm not sure if you looked at it, only 13 wards have seen almost no to 5% in raising property taxes. The rest of them have seen anywhere between 15% and 300%. For those who say that the rich must pay, well, do you consider 50th Ward rich because it's paying 300% increase in property taxes? The 26th Ward, Humboldt Park, a bastion of Latinos, their property taxes have gone up 300%, and you wonder why they're leaving. Wards like the 9th Ward, the 13th Ward, the 25th Ward, the 27th and 28th and 2nd and 29th and 13th are seeing increases of 100% in property taxes. In the first conversation many of you have, especially this time around, we need to raise property taxes. What we need to do is cut, what we need to do is look at reforms, just like you have done. Now, I'm an accountant, I look at the numbers, because the numbers tell the story of where our city is today, where our city was yesterday and 10 years ago. And in order to make things happen, things had to be sold off. Proud of that? Absolutely not. Is it happening today? Like I said, absolutely not. And I hope that never happens. So, am I believing that $163 million are coming? They better come, because it's up to all of us to make sure that that happens. It's money that is owed to this city. It's not that, "I don't know if we owe it," no, they owe it, they're going to pay it. And the reforms you took on this budget and the vacancies that were eliminated, that's real dollars, that's real reform. That's what should have happened. We have a long way on police, no doubt about it. But when you need someone, you call 911 and ask for the police, and the police gets there. And you're paying for that in this budget. When you vote no, you have no confidence on any of our agencies that provide day-to-day services that helps your constituents stay alive, stay afloat, and they can go to work knowing that when they come home, the lights are going to be on. That's the kind of optimism you have in this city. Well, I have optimism, I've been here 17 years, and I'm going to continue to be here more. I know what I've done in my ward, I know what it was then and what it is now, and every budget I've taken has been a tough one, and every vote I've taken has been about balancing the interests of those who can pay and those who cannot. And we've done it. We met our obligations, not just from the high to the lowest. Has it been perfect? Absolutely not. Do I went to health clinics? Yes. Went in the back of the arse closed. Am I upset about it? Environmental protection, many of our communities are dying to be protected from pollution. Are we funding that entirely? No. But that's the thing about being a legislator here in this body, that you sit here, and you come, and you go to the meetings, and you ask what's going on, and you balance the interests of what's on the ground. And I hope you guys do that more and more. Your constituents are going to realize, not just now, not six months from now, but a year from now, three years from now, what you've done. It will be a balance, it'll be a reckoning when Election Day comes, and they're going to remember what you did, not today, but every day that you were out there fighting for them. And I've never stood up, Mayor, and spoke this passionate about issues, to be honest All right, all right, I've done it in the past, but you know what? Sometimes, a repeat is a need, and sometimes a good speech is a need, I grant you that. But you get my point, you get my point. Let's not be duplicitous, please, let's govern as we're elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Taliya Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President, I will be brief. I rise in support of this budget. I am not troubled in my mind or my spirit about this budget. Four years ago, when I was elected to sit in the seat that Alderman Reboias had switched out, in the 29th Ward, we had a murder every week and a half. That meant there was a man, woman, boy, girl, or child that was being murdered on the streets of Chicago in the 29th Ward every week and a half. So as I think of this budget, I think about the men and women that live in that ward, I think about the seniors, the businesses, the community residents, the neighborhood residents, and that's why I'm not troubled in my mind and my spirit about this budget. You know, you have made it your commitment to not just this body, but you made it your commitment to this city that public safety will remain at the top of your agenda, and I commend you for all of your efforts in keeping true to your word. We have, in not-so-distant past, been faced with not just media scrutiny about the city of Chicago, and it was not just here in the city of Chicago, but across this country and across this world. We have claimed ourselves to be a world-class city, but yet we were talked about in every city outlet, in every media outlet across this country, scaring tourists that wanted to come to Chicago. And I'm glad that your budget addresses that. You created an Office of Public Safety Administration that puts over 200 officers, or nearly 200 officers, back on the street, patrolling the districts, making our neighborhoods safe for our seniors, our young men and our young women, for our business owners and for our residents. And so that's why I'm not troubled in my mind or my spirit about this budget. You've made that your priority for this city. And I say we are a world-class city. We are a city that put our residents first, and when putting our residents first, we have to look out for their welfare. We have an opportunity with this budget to make sure that we add safety and security to the streets by supporting our police department, and you've done that. And what that means particularly to me about the 29th Ward is that our children can go to school feeling added safety and security, that our children can play in front of their house with added safety and security, that our children can walk the streets of Chicago, that our residents can sit on their front pucho with feeling safety and security. So I want to thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank Pat Dowell's team for making sure that this budget process was easy to comprehend, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for making sure, and your team, for putting public safety first. Thank you, Mayor, I do support this budget, and I urge my colleagues to support this budget as well.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in strong support of this budget, your first budget, and I've heard a couple words today, and a lot of the remarks, I heard the word frustration, I heard the word satisfied. When I think about this budget, I think about a couple words. I think of reasonable, I think of responsible, I think of real. This is a budget for where we are as a city today. You took office seven months ago with all of us, and we had a $400 million hole, which grew before the budget process started to $838 million. And this budget reflects the closing of that, and does so without putting an undue burden on property tax owners and homeowners who fear getting their assessments, who choose every day to live in Chicago. This does this without passing an undue exorbitant burden on business owners who every day have to deal with Amazon and deal with an uncertain economy that provide jobs, that provide jobs for citizens of Chicago that will help us with the $15 minimum wage. This is a reasonable budget for where we are today. This budget is the largest TIF surplus in city history. For everyone who hates TIFs, hates them, this budget puts $300 million back to the taxing bodies. The city of Chicago gets some, but who else gets some? Chicago Public Schools. That money will go to educate the children in our city that we need desperately. That's what this budget does. We talk about libraries. This budget opens libraries up on Sundays, which provide people the chance to educate themselves, apply for jobs, but with youth in our city, it's safe harbor on Sundays for them, and we cannot underestimate that. This money puts money for homelessness. 200 more youth will get a chance to have shelter that otherwise are going to be out on the streets as we get into the months ahead of us. That's real for those people, and it keeps those young people out of a path of homelessness moving forward. It provides 520 more affordable housing units. Is that enough? No. We've got 120,000 units that we need, but it's a start, and it's real for those people that are in those units. It puts more money towards mental health. Is that enough? No. But it is a start, and it's an investment. This process, for all 50 of us who were elected to be here and vote today, is done in a very open and transparent process with Alderman Dowell, who did a phenomenal job. If you wanted to be a part of this process, you wanted to have an idea, you had every opportunity to participate, to ask your questions, to give your ideas, and there was a genuineness with your team, Madam President, to look through those options, and some of those were incorporated, and some of those we are going to continue to get to when it comes to revenue. I want to commend Susie Park, Jennifer Hung Bennett, and Michelle Fields, who I hope stays on your team in service to the city. Samantha, my fault. Your team has worked with all of us to make what I think is a very reasonable budget. I also look at the team you've assembled in the administration and how this budget prepares us to grow as a city. Maurice Cox, who we would have preferred to have here on day one, is now here and planning, and he is touring the city with the Aldermen that are here and working with communities to grow development, to grow jobs. Maurisa Navarro at Housing, who's going to have an AERO task force and assemble housing advocates around the city to grow housing around our city. This budget prepares us to do that. It's a budget that looks at how we can partner together to grow our city, to stabilize it, and that's where we have to grow if we want to reduce the taxes that affect us all. I want to talk a little about Springfield. We wanted to get $50 million out of this budget out of Springfield, and we failed to do that. As someone who served for 11 years in Springfield, I want to tell everyone this. We need to have one voice when we go down there and ask for something, one voice led by the mayor. For those people that want to freelance, for those people that want to call senators and state reps and ask them to hold back a vote, try to get more, I want all of you to remember how we did this veto session. We got nothing, zero. Speaker, whoever the speaker is, the president, the governor, they want us to be of one voice, speaking for Chicagoans. When we freelance, we get nothing, a lesson we learned that does not help our constituents. The other thing is, who benefits from that? Those legislators are never going to vote for anything from the city of Chicago, not one thing. When we're unified, when we work with the leaders in Springfield, we have a chance to get something done, and that's something that we have to work on. Alderman Beal brought up the elephant in the room about money we may get from the federal government. What I want to say is, our elephant in the room after we pass this budget today is violence and how it affects us. This budget puts $9 million more that will be used on the streets, on the corners, around our city this summer when we need it most. I wanted $50 million, we got nine. Having that money put to use with nonprofit partners is real, and it's going to add safety in our city. We have to get a new superintendent of police, which is our next task after we pass this budget, to make sure that we get the right person to lead our police department, to lead us through the reforms that are necessary, to lead us to have a safe city. I'm not happy about police overtime, but when we have violence, we have to put overtime to use. Our best answer to that is safe streets. Our best answer to that is foot patrolmen and trust between police officers and community, and we've got a lot to work to do on that. But again, Madam President, I stand in strong support of your budget today because it's reasonable, it's responsible, and it puts us on a path for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, like a number of my colleagues, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my chairman, Dowell here, my seatmate, I'd like to call her a friend, for her leadership. I see your vision, and I see the hard work that you put in, not only here, but more importantly in your community, and I know that you're heading us in the right direction, so thank you, thank you for your leadership. I'd also like to thank, Mayor, your staff led by Samantha Fields, and their willingness to work with us. I think that it was not an ideal process, but a very real process where I felt that they were willing to work with us and showed that. Mayor, you campaigned and won based on very progressive issues. People throw that word around very cavalierly these days. To me, the word progressive is used too often and too freely, but means ones whose ideals and policies are focused on helping the least of those, the underrepresented and the under-resourced. We left progressive and structural revenue on the table that could have been used to uplift those who needed it the most. We could have done more for public mental health, for affordable housing, for safety, and even the fight for 15. However, Voltaire said, "The best is the enemy of the good." This budget isn't perfect, Mayor, but if you put it in context with previous budgets and where we were when you were elected, Mayor, it's a good start, moving in the right direction. Anyone who voted for Lincoln Yards in '78 should definitely be voting for this budget. Albeit not ideal, we did move forward on mental health, we did move forward on affordable housing, on the fight for 15, on public safety. We surplus more than ever, we got more fiscally prudent. Mayor, I believe you are cautiously leading us in the right direction. However, I think it will take bold and unpopular moves to get us to where we really need to be. I believe you are prepared to move forward boldly, which is why I will be supporting you in this budget and fighting for the changes we need to make moving forward. I appreciate the care you are taking and the diligence you have shown to learn and understand the city and all the wheels that turn it. I see the pushes and the investments you are putting in place to right-size the many years of disparity that a number of our communities, mostly black and brown, have faced over the years. I see the people you are putting in place to do so. While I appreciate and truly, truly respect the views of my younger progressive brothers and sisters that I'm happy to have on board and proud to work alongside, Mayor, I see that you have righted a ship. You've turned it in the right direction, but the ship hasn't moved yet, and so it seems as if we haven't moved. But that alone, righting the ship and turning it around, is huge. Mayor, you have moved the needle in the right, or as Mayor, you have moved the needle in the right, or as my esteemed colleague would say, in the left direction. If you continue in a progressive and bold direction, I will be there to fight with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I hadn't planned on speaking today, but based on comments from some of the previous speakers, I felt obliged to address a few issues. And before I start, I want to thank Chairman Dowell and Chairman Wagasback for doing a really great job presiding over a very inclusive and collaborative budget process that was a refreshing course of events. Based on the comments earlier today, I think it's pretty clear that this is one of the most politically and ideologically diverse city councils in the history of Chicago, and that's a good thing for local democracy with a lowercase d. We've heard every mix of complaints about the proposed budget today. Some have said this budget will spend too much. It doesn't include enough cuts or carries too many vacancies forward. Others say this budget doesn't spend enough. We want to reestablish and expand city programs. Others still say this budget raises too many taxes and fees. It's too heavy a burden for working families. And then others say this budget doesn't raise enough new taxes or the right ones. Alderman King quoted Voltaire. I'll take it a step further, and I'll quote the Rolling Stones. You can't always get what you want, and I say, "Welcome to the Chicago City Council." And this tells me that while certainly this is not a perfect budget, it is one that strikes a delicate balance. Some have raised concerns that this budget is built on revenue projections and assumptions. Every budget is built on revenue projections and assumptions, period. To have a balanced budget, we aren't required to have the revenue today. We simply need to have it in the door during the fiscal year 2020. And when it comes to the $168 million in ambulance reimbursements, we've been reading about a lot in the paper the last couple of weeks, an acrimonious subject, municipalities across Illinois, not just the city of Chicago, already receive reimbursements for these services. The difference is that all these municipalities and the city of Chicago have worked together with the governor's administration to see our costs fairly reimbursed. And I can tell you that this budget director and this mayor would not be plugging that assumption into this budget were it not credible and real. We have no reason to believe that it won't be approved and fulfilled. Others who are attacking this budget have supported far less responsible budgets in previous years, budgets frankly that helped land us where we are today. Now to remind people, those budgets included things like selling off our city assets and valuable property and land, rating Chicago's short and long-term ready-day funds, unpaid furlough days for city workers, and of course, the massive $600 million property tax, remember the tax to end all taxes. Now suddenly, the boosters of previous bad budgets are now fiscal hawks, budget conservatives. Those concerns ring hollow with me. This budget is not perfect, and there are a number of components I don't like personally. But on balance, this is a budget that is both reasonable, responsible, and based in our current fiscal reality, and for that reason, I will be voting aye. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, I did not vote for Lincoln Yards, or the '78, or the infrastructure, or the parking meter deal, or the red light. There is a difference. There is a difference between campaigning and governing. And Madam President, I think that we're moving in the right direction. This is about a process, and I have been here 20 years to see that process, and no, I have not been a rubber stamp. Yes, this is a patchwork budget, but it is a budget nonetheless, and it is a budget that works for now. For those that chose not to attend the hearings and then criticized the budget hearings have no credibility with me. I'd like to thank Chairman Dowell and Chairman Wagasback for updating the budget process. And I'd like to thank you and your staff and Budget and IGA for including us in the process. And as crazy as it was with the schedules and the late-night conversations and everything, we got it done. And so people that talk about participation, good or bad, it was still participation, and it was 24-hour participation. I never believed that the real estate transfer tax was going to pass in Springfield before now, and I always knew that we weren't going to casino our way out of this or marijuana our way out of this. I too, like Alderman Moore, support the hotel surcharge, and we're going to keep pushing through that. And I'm proud that I bought to your attention the 20-year leases that have been going on that should no longer go on here in the city. For those who negotiated for things and were part of the negotiation team and then turned around and casting a no vote, that's disingenuous. And I want to say that we have taken a step in the right direction towards more progressive measures. We have no property tax increase. We have the congestion tax, which is a progressive measure. We have the TIF surplus, which is a progressive measure. We have the $15, which is a progressive measure. We have more on mental health, which is a progressive measure, and we have ethics reform, which is also a progressive measure. So with that being said, I will be supporting this budget.
Thank you.
First off, I too want to thank the staff and everyone for their hard work on putting this all together. Jenny, Susie, my new friend Tiffany, who we've had great discussions. Every night at 8 o'clock in my house, I got to put my daughter to bed. Sometimes I let her stay up another 15 minutes. Actually, my wife lets us stay up 15 minutes. But whenever it's time to go to bed, we got to fight. And I say that to say, no matter what time we go to bed, there's going to be a fight. Do we need additional revenue? Of course, we need additional revenue. No one has told us that, hey, don't cut my services, but everyone says, don't raise revenue. Do we want to become like places in the South where you take your garbage to the corner and put it in the dumpster? Do we want to have our side streets not plowed in the wintertime like they do in St. Louis? Or do we want to have the side streets not have lights like in Flint? I don't think any of us would subscribe to such, given the state of where we are in Chicago. But again, no one wants to pay for this stuff. I'll quote somebody that's from the West Side, a man named Ben Franklin. And I said this before, he says, "Everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die." Everybody wants to go to heaven, but again, people got to pay for what it is that they want. And again, I believe we need additional resources to help with the homelessness, violence prevention, all of those things. And yes, and we realize, there is in some respects a tale of two cities here, in the city of Chicago, where a two-flat in Garfield Park is worth only about an eighth of what a two-flat is worth in Lincoln Park. But yet still, a child growing up in Lincoln Park can expect to live 20 more years than a child from Garfield Park. So we have some challenges, and that goes unstated, that we have these challenges. And we may not all agree on everything that exists here, but what I can say that I will support, I think that every person that is sitting in that seat up there has been given an opportunity out the gate to set some priorities. And I think it would be wrong of us to not allow the person that's been duly elected by the people to have that opportunity. Now, I was here in 2011 when every seat was full and everybody went in one direction. And again, giving that chief executive an opportunity to lay out a path. Now, we all didn't agree on everything, and in time, I think we may have some differences, but I think that we at least, coming in, should give the chief executive an opportunity to lay out of priorities as she's been duly elected by the people. And again, we don't have to be disagreeable about it, and of course, we're going to have some disagreements in all of this conversation, but we must be moving in the same direction. Yes, let's have conversations about revenue, Chairman Viegis, but also at the end of those conversations, there need to be some votes taken, and not just hearings, so that we can begin to do some of the things that our constituents and our colleagues talk about. We also must move in a direction and understand that while some of us have been crying about last year, the tax bill you just got, some of us have been dealing with high taxes for eons, and now that the ship is being righted and now it's a problem. Again, some folks have been getting away with murder for years, and some folks have been paying way too much for years. And so again, if we're going to right this ship, let's do it right. Let's do it together. And again, I believe that we should support this budget because we do need to chart a path, and I do believe the people have given her the ability by electing her to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and colleagues, I support this budget that represents a smart, thoughtful, and hard set of choices made in the face of nearly impossible financial situation while also making progressive changes for our neighbors who need and deserve a fairer city. And Alderman Austin, I can't keep a tune in a bucket, but I will work on that. I'm not as polished as my predecessor, but I will continue to work as those of you who had criticisms of the way that we manage things. We will take those changes and make sure we improve on them next year. And I also want to thank all of you for the comments that you made during this budget session because they were important to me to understand which direction we were going, how to improve things, and how to make it better for each one of you and for the people who speak out at each one of our meetings as they did here today. As you know, last year, we faced a $97 million budget gap, and the AFA from 2018 projected a potential gap of $251 million for 2020. Since then, we have learned that the city's true financial standing is actually much worse, an $838 million budget gap. Such a budget gap sprung on a new administration in its opening days gives me confidence that I made the right votes in the past and that the process by which we arrived at today gives me confidence that this is the right budget to support today. Now saying that, whether you vote against this budget or for it, you should have no fear in your choice. You should have no fear that a city worker is not going to do their job as they have in the past. Streets and sand workers will still get out there and do their job. Police and fire will still do their job. Our workers in forestry, family services, and every department will continue to do their job regardless of how you vote today. Now, this budget does close this enormous gap, not with another property tax increase, not with an increase of regressive taxes and fines, not by cutting the vital services, as I've said, in the neediest of our communities. Mayor, you've asked us to make sacrifices in our committees, and we've done that. You've made changes in areas that have not seen significant reform in decades, if at all. This budget actually anticipates what we will need to pay for. When we talk about the police increase of $153 million, that is actually taking it from where it used to be hidden and putting the liability where it should be and holding the police department accountable for what they should be. You've asked us to look at the settlements and what we need to pay instead of pretending they won't happen, and we've also hired a chief risk management officer to look for reforms that will help prevent the malfeasance and waste in many of our departments. We can't really tackle many of these endemic issues plaguing our city for decades without challenging the status quo, and this administration with this budget does just that. It closes the gap by restructuring our debt in a fiscally sound and financially smart way. It closes that gap by bringing us closer to making rideshare pay its fair share while also reducing congestion in the central business district. It closes that gap by declaring the largest TIF surplus in the city's history. We're filling the gap left in our revenue after rightfully reforming our fines and fee structure, and I want to thank City Clerk Valencia for taking the lead on that. Working together with the task force of Alderman and outsiders, people outside of city council, we'll finally see some reforms that will help every individual in the city. These are, we're creating a path to a $15 minimum wage for those workers who need it the most. So these are some progressive reforms some of my colleagues and I have been fighting for many years to achieve with advocates and our friends in labor for many years. This budget expands library access on a day when many people can go, Sundays, providing access to the knowledge of the world for every Chicagoan every day, and it provides progressive water bill relief to our neighbors who need it the most. So I commend the mayor for these progressive reforms and for the expertise of the budget officers for their work on this budget. I think we all speak together, as we have heard, to thank Budget Chairwoman Dowell for her leadership during the budget hearing process. I spoke to her, or I texted her the other night, and I asked her how many questions her staff handled, and I think it was over 615, and by the end of the day today, it was probably well over 650 questions just from Alderman alone. Not only did she manage to get that to departments, but she got all the answers back, and that is the first time I've seen that in the last 12 years. I do support this ordinance, this budget, and I look forward to working on 2021. Let's boost the cooperation with our state reps and state senators for the progressive revenue and laws we need in Springfield to help right our fiscal ship and create the city every resident of Chicago deserves. Let's focus on the work we have sworn to do for the people of this city. And regardless of your vote today, our shared goal as legislators is to make Chicago a better city for everyone. Let's do it together. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt a substitute ordinance amending the 2019 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as SO 2019-8406. This amendment does not change the total budget amount for 2019. Thanks to a more favorable interest rate from the proposed bond refunding, this ordinance simply reflects increased funds available for pensions and less funds in the same amount needed for our debt service. I move passage by a voice vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Motion for reconsideration?
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration say aye. All opposed say no.
No.
The motion fails. Chairman Dowell?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt a substituted series of amendments to the 2020 budget recommendations and the text portion of the annual appropriation ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as SO 2019-8825. This item only includes the amendments to the budget recommendations and the text portion of the budget ordinance. It is an introductory step to the vote of the complete 2020 budget, and I move passage by a voice vote.
Hearing no objection. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the amendments are adopted. I think that's Alderman Lopez for the record. Motion reconsider?
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider say aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
The motion fails.
I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt a substituted I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt the 2020 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as 02019-8407, by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Zalowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sichio Lopez.
No.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Spassato.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
The ayes are 39, the nays are 11, the motion passes. Chairman Dowell?
Motion to reconsider.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Daly-Thompson, motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration say aye? Those opposed say no?
No.
The motion fails.
Madam President, I now move to concur in the recommendation of the committee and adopt the substitute 2020 Management Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as SO 2019-8537, by the same roll call vote and was applied to the 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes the unfinished business of the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Chairman Wagaspack.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt an ordinance amending the 2019 tax levy, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as 02019-8520. This amendment does not change the total amount levied in 2019. Thanks to a more favorable interest rate from the proposed bond refunding, this ordinance simply reflects increased funds available for pensions and less funds in the same amount needed for debt service. I move passage by a voice vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Thompson, motion for reconsideration.
Okay, did we vote? We didn't, I'm sorry, Madam President, I don't know if we had a vote taken.
Hold on one second.
Madam President, I made a motion for passage by a voice vote of item number five.
And hearing no objection, so ordered. All those in favor of item number five signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
The motion passes. Alderman Thompson, motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration say aye? All those opposed say no? The motion fails. Chairman Wagaspack?
Thank you, Madam President. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt a bond refunding ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as 02019-8927, by a voice vote.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? The amendments are adopted. Motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, before I take that vote, I just want, on the bond vote, after concurring with the ethics, although I don't have to, but out of an abundance of caution, because I had my uncle, who was part of Kat Mutian, and a cousin who was part of Goldman, I'm going to recuse myself under Rule 41, and so I would ask to be recorded as recusing, Rule 14, I'm sorry, inverted, excuse me, out of Rule 14.
The record will so reflect.
Now, Madam President?
All right.
Oh, yeah, I can't.
Alderman Mitchell?
Madam President, I move for reconsideration of the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration say aye? All those opposed say no?
No.
Chairman Wagaspack?
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, the next two votes will be roll call votes. I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2020 tax levy, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as 02019-8521, by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada.
Come back to you.
Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Sichio Lopez. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyes.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Viegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Spassato.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Capelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon.
Vote is 35 to 15, the motion passes. Alderman Wagaspack?
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry, pardon me one second. Alderman Haddon?
Chair, I'd like to be recorded as a guest on item four.
So reflected.
Thank you.
Alderman Haddon, I stand corrected. Once the matter has been voted on, you can't go back and change your vote, so, or add to. Alderman Wagaspack?
Madam President, I now move to concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee and adopt the 2020 Revenue Ordinance, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of November 20, 2019, as 02019-8527, by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sichio Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spassato.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Capelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon.
Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration?
Madam President, I'd like to-
Right, right, sorry. The ayes are 39, the nays are 11. Alderman Thompson.
I'd like to reconsider items seven and eight on a motion to reconsider both of those votes.
On the motion to reconsider items seven and eight, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The motion to reconsider items seven and eight fails. Is there any other unfinished business?
Madam President, that concludes all unfinished business, and I move to return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, we have passed a budget for fiscal year 2020. The 2020 budget we just passed is a progressive blueprint for the future. I want to thank Chairman Dowell for incredible leadership, diligence, and counsel over these many months. Great work. I also want to thank and acknowledge all the chairmen, the caucus chairs, and others who helped move this budget forward. I also want to thank my team, led by the fearless Susie Park, our budget director, Jenny Bennett, the CFO, Reshma Soni, our controller, and their respective teams, and I also want to call out the work of the IGA team, which was diligent, relentless, tireless, and we got here because of all your hard work. And a special thanks to all who voted yes today. You know that speeches are easy, but governing is hard. This budget will close an $838 million gap, and as everyone here knows, to accomplish that, we first look inwards and not to the taxpayers. Together, we found $538 million in strategic government reductions and efficiencies, along with an additional $352 million in carefully chosen revenues. At my State of the City address three months ago, I promised to usher in a new wave of transparency and openness throughout this process, and that is exactly what we did. Through extensive community engagement, we welcomed 2,600 participants at five community town halls and more than 7,300 responses via an online public survey, and some of you referenced this earlier. My team responded to over 600 questions from Alderman and responded back in record time before the vote today. We listened to our residents and stakeholders. This budget is balanced with 61% structural changes, which means that we have created a long-term fix to our budget challenges on which we can build a fiscally sound future. This budget contains no significant property taxes, and let me say that again, this budget contains no significant property tax increases, and only a modest increase in the library levy to support Sunday hours. And despite the historic deficit, we were still able to make important investments in mental health, double the commitment in homelessness, and provide additional supports towards violence reduction. Furthermore, this budget raises the minimum wage to $15 an hour by 2021, which will directly impact more than 430,000 workers. I want to thank Alderman King for her leadership on this important issue, along with our friends in organized labor and the business community, and notably, Sam Toya of the Illinois Restaurant Association and other business leaders. Friends, good social policy is good economic policy. Hold it on, hold on, sir. Hold on, sir. Hold on, sir. Make no mistake, there is more to do, and we are just getting started. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for being able to express yourself, but now, you must leave. This vote, this vote represents a down payment and a significant step in a long journey we will take together as a city. Thanks again to all of you who supported this budget and for taking this journey with us. I look forward to what we will accomplish together in the future. Committee reports. Alderman Talafaro for Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of City Council reporting for your committee on public safety, for which a meeting was held on Monday, November 25, 2019. There was one item before the committee for consideration, item number one on the agenda, ordinance 2019-8518, the substitute ordinance as amended in Amendment to Municipal Code Chapters Four, Seven, Eight, and Nine regarding cannabis-related penalties. This item passed and committed by a voice vote. If there are no objections, I move for the passage of this item by the last favorable vote of the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion for reconsideration.
Chairman Talafaro, I believe that this requires a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam President. If there are no objections, I move for the passage of this item by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dowell. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman, oh, sorry, Alderman Hairston. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman- Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Zalowski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Secho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagispack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Spazado.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Honey.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Ostroman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Alderman Hairston, aye. Cardness, aye.
Mitchell, aye. Cardness, aye.
Aye.
King, aye.
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
Thompson, aye.
Hairston, aye.
Hairston, aye.
And Thompson.
Thompson, aye.
Thompson's an aye as well.
Burke, aye.
Burke, aye.
Cardness, aye.
Cardness, aye. This is why we need electronic voting, just saying.
Forty-three?
Yeah. We're in the Stone Ages.
What? What?
This ordinance passes 43 yays and three nays. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to reconsider the vote.
On the motion for reconsideration, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.